Will you call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Arthur?
Present.
Mr. LaFerla?
Present.
Mr. Kuzyer?
Present.
Dr. Agress?
Present.
Ms. Riley?
Present.
Mr. Hanson?
Present.
Mr. Grove?
Present.
Will you please join me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Bruckner is now going to share some student recognition with us.
Thank you, President Grove. I was just sitting there one night minding my own business, reading the Council of Us Nonpareil, and I came across a headline that said, "Young Leaders Accepted for Year-Long Program." And this is a listing of all of the students in the Council of Us area who were accepted for the Youth Leadership Council of Us Committee. And last year, I got the opportunity to speak to them, and it occurred to me we should celebrate them. And this year, we have more from Council of Us than we've had in many years. And tonight, three of them are here. The other ones couldn't be with us. So let me please have you recognize Abraham Lincoln's student, Kayliana Cox. Come on up here. And just so you know, we're going to give each of them a keychain that says Council of Us Community Schools, where dreams begin. So we hope your dreams are beginning. From Thomas Jefferson, Angela Larson. And from Thomas Jefferson, Rosa Valle Lopez. Rosa's accompanied by her sister, and the other two are accompanied by their mothers. And I want to thank you in advance because you three ladies and the other students from Council of Us schools include Bradley Krug from Thomas Jefferson, Claire Wilder, Abraham Lincoln, Connor Garside, Abraham Lincoln, Claire Jones, Abraham Lincoln, Haley Hartman, Abraham Lincoln, and from Thomas Jefferson, Timothy Gin, Angela Humphrey, Genesis Orlando Urbano, Jenna Dietrich, and Jesus Gonzalez Avila. These students will be representing us at ongoing meetings throughout the whole year, and they'll learn an awful lot about our community, but our community will learn about them. And that's above and beyond the call of duty, so we wanted to say thanks. So, thank you.
Thanks for coming, ladies. Appreciate it. Do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further comments about the agenda? All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 24th and the special meeting of May 31st?
I'll move to approve the minutes of May 24th and the special meeting of May 31st, 2016.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, corrections about the minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Now, we're to that part in our agenda where we have an opportunity for the public to address us. I assume no one said anything ahead of time. I guess we have two presenters there. I guess we're going to hear from them, so I guess we won't have any public participation tonight. Next is our superintendent's report, student achievement.
And we are very pleased tonight to have Julie Smith, who is going to give some information to the board about our elementary literacy instructional materials that you've read about in ABC Notes, but she's going to tell us the why and the wherefore. Thank you for being here, Mrs. Smith.
Oh, no problem whatsoever. I kind of thought, I thought I would start with a little bit of a history about where we got to, where we came from and where we are today in our work around literacy. And so I went back to the first year that we became, we had four schools piloting our current literacy model, the CBLM model. What was really going on prior to that, that was in 2009, when we had our first pilot, we had a curriculum, so the what is taught. We had a curriculum that was really a district framework that was developed by teachers. It was not very specific. It was, it was pretty general. It was literally a framework that went on with there. Most of our professional development up till that time was really around what Iowa was providing with their reading-first initiative. And so we were doing a lot of things in that way. The following year, when we decided to adopt the instructional model... Oh, excuse me, before we go on to that, when, when we talked about our instructional model at that time, that how to teach, instructional model is how to teach. And our whole literacy program was really focused around a guided reading component. Teachers were just delivering multiple guided reading groups, instruction to small group all the time. There are a few things that were done whole group, like spelling, a little bit of writing. We didn't have a very big focus on that. Our biggest focus and the majority of our time was spent in small group instruction with kids. The materials that we had for kids at that time, we had our level book, our leveled book libraries. We've had those for lots and lots of years. We had sit and spelling at that time, step up to writing, and then McCracken, which is a phonemic awareness phonics program. Okay, great. So, in the, beginning in the 2010 school year, 2010-2011 school year, this is when we implemented our CBLM district-wide. And CBLM, Council of Us Literacy Model, is an instructional model. It's based on separate but connected workshops. We have language workshop, which is really where we engage kids in the study of how language works and how it's put together. We have readers workshop, which ties into that, when that really more focuses on reading comprehension skills and strategies. And then we have writers workshop, which was really on the focus on more active writing. That was a big switch for us when we switched over to this model. The workshops are connected, but they're separate. They're designed to intertwine with each other, so what you learn about language, you apply to reading, and you apply to writing in the different workshops. They are comprised of many lessons, whole and small group instruction, and individual instruction, and then a shared time where kids are really consolidating their knowledge about what was taught in the mini lesson. We still, at this time, use the district curriculum framework. Again, it was pretty loose on what we were teaching, and it really wasn't structured enough to support consistency across the district. And so what we relied on for consistency really was, within the model, it was genre studies. So genre studies became how we made things consistent for kids across the district. We were all doing the same genres at each grade level at the same time. And a lot of our professional development was really focused on that instructional model. We spent a good two years just really getting into what are the components and how do you do effective mini lessons and things like that. Then in 2012, the school year 2012 is when we were expected to adopt the Common Core, or the Iowa Core, excuse me, about what we teach. And this really changed a lot for us, because we went from that loose framework to a much more structured and specific set of standards that we needed to teach with. And we kind of then tried to put those into our instructional model in different ways. And so there was a shift from teachers teaching genres to teachers teaching standards. And that really started that year. The Iowa Core is based on very good, strong components of reading, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency comprehension, word analysis. All of that is in with, was within the Iowa Core. We kind of went really heavy on the comprehension part when we first started on this, because it was kind, it was tied in with our genre studies. PD focus shifted to learning about the Iowa Core and understanding those standards. This is the time where the, the teacher focus had to shift to, on finding and aligning materials to teach those standards. So we had teachers who were teaching a framework, pretty loose, to these standards, quite tight, quite involved, and they were having to find materials to teach each lesson. So if a standard was saying, "You need to compare and contrast two stories from the same author," they had to go out and find two stories from the same author. We provided mentor texts, which they could do some lessons from, but they still had to go out and find texts for teach, for kids to practice with. A lot of their time was spent on finding texts and developing those lessons, because likewise, with the, the Common Core just gave us what to teach, but it didn't help us really with how to teach it in terms of, or our materials didn't help us with how to align and teach those things. You can see, at this time, we expanded our materials that we provided to, to teachers, and we had some very nice, high-quality materials by very good people. So along with the ones we had prior to that, we put in a phonics program, a Fountas and Penel Phonics program at kindergarten. They also received Sing a Song a Poetry book to work on phonemic awareness at kindergarten. All teachers got the Continuum of Literacy Learning, which really helped teachers to understand in leveled readers what you could expect kids to be able to do in those readers in terms of skills and comprehension skills. Interactive Read Aloud, which helped with some of our mini lessons and some different focused areas. And then, again, this is when we updated our mentor text, excuse me, to go along with that. So, what we started to hear a couple of years ago during this time, when teachers were really, really trying to still understand the Core and develop those lessons that were aligned with that, what we, thank you.
Hey Julie, while, while you're pausing for a minute, just in case we don't know what mentor texts are, what does that mean?
Sure. Those are, those are books that you might know of, that would be a typical literature book, usually a, one that you might read to your kids. And so I'm, like, Jumanji is one of our fifth grade, was one of our fifth grade mentor texts. And so what, the teacher would use that, the idea behind a mentor text is kids become very familiar with it, so that the teacher go in, that the kids don't have to think about the story, and they can go in and think about the lesson the teacher is trying to provide. And so they use those, and they had to develop the lessons with, so what are we teaching around word analysis in here? And hopefully that, that those mentor texts had the words or types of words that they were wanting to do to teach how to analyze words and stuff. So the idea behind mentor texts, it becomes very familiar, so they can concentrate on the skill rather than on the story. It's a familiar story for the kids. One of the things that also was, was really hard within our model, what we were doing, was really trying to align any type of differentiation to support both ends of the spectrum with readers. And in our small group instruction, in our leveled books, we have those at different things, but they're not always necessary right, aligned appropriately with what the teacher is trying to teach and have kids practice. So that became a real struggle, too, for teachers to be able to try to find everything. And it was just really time-consuming. And this is when we, you know, the last, last year and this year, we really started hearing about, it, this, this is very time-consuming. We're spending all of our time, and they would, our very best teachers, which would talk about how much it took to plan all the lessons in the different ways. And what we were really noticing then was, you know what? We don't really have materials aligned with the Iowa Core that can best support them. And so discussions this year, towards the end of the year and the spring, really came around what materials would best help us do that. And we first looked at materials that came recommended, that is either fully aligned with the Iowa Core without reservation. The University of Indiana had done a study on the materials that were out there now, and, sorry. I'll push it over, sorry. There we go. So the, we started with that study and looked at the materials that they had fully recommended without reservation as being aligned to the Core. So that was our first thing that we looked at. Then we looked at those materials to see, do they fit with a workshop model? Because that is extremely important to us. That is a wonderful way to teach children, and that's what we wanted. And we did eliminate some that weren't workshop model, that really weren't aligned with a workshop model. We came down to two different sets of materials, and then had a group of teachers, administrators, coaches, literacy program leads, teachers from our Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee come together and review those, against some different criteria, to look at saying, "How are these aligning? How can we use those?" And at the end of the time that they had done their study, the group pretty much unanimously chose the, it's called Reading Wonders by McGraw-Hill. What we did with that, then, was to take it out to all the staff and invited all teachers to come in and look at the materials. And that, that first group helped to answer questions and showed them by grade level what was going on. We held nights at both sides, two nights, one at each side of town. Teachers could attend either one, and we had really a, quite a good turnout. I think we had 100 and, 154 teachers turned out between the two nights to come and look at the materials. And what we asked them at that time was, "Would you like these materials to support you? Or would you like to continue with the materials that you have, and we will look, and we'll go on with our science adoption of materials that we were going to do?" And it was, it was a very strong vote in favor of it. It was 147 to 7 in favor of going with the materials. And I think that really speaks loudly as to why we needed to get better materials to support what's going on with the Common Core. So, that kind of gives you this story. Can I answer any questions for you?
I might just tell you that I was at the differentiated accountability sessions, where representatives, a large number of representatives from the Department of Education and various AEAs were helping us just look at all of our work. And one of the gentlemen asked us, after two and a half days of work, "Did we think maybe we should look at something else for reading?" And I was sitting there thinking, "I don't think you want to go there, sir, because I think we're pretty content where we are with reading." And all of a sudden, it was, I would love to have it all on camera, because it was kind of like a flower blossoming with people having the desire to say, "Yeah, we should consider that." And it went across the whole room with, I thought, I didn't think Julie would go for that, I didn't think Cory would go for that, our reading specialist went for that. And I, I did say at the time, "I really thought the, the earth would move if you said something like that." And in some ways, the earth moved, but it seems to have moved in a way that we needed it to move, so.
I was a little bit surprised, not a little bit surprised, I was a lot surprised when we started studying the materials. Our literacy coaches have been involved in this from day one, and we have, from CBLM, they were involved prior with that, with the guided reading. They've been involved in our literacy program, many of them, for many years. And when, when they were convinced, this, these are the materials that we needed to follow and do, that was like, okay, those are my heart, that was the hardest sell, because those are the ones that had, had probably the closest connection to everything and are really purist in terms of teaching, reading, and doing that, and so skilled. But all, every last one of them agreed, it's like, no, this is really what we need to, it's what we need to provide our teachers for them to be successful with the kids.
And the Department of Education representatives are using our specific episode as an example of how differentiated accountability, that's their term for it, works. And in fact, have had Julie and Cory present to at least one group, and several of us are presenting again, because I can testify that when we went into that group, I for one, and I don't think anyone in our group ever thought this is where we would end up, but, and, and we in Council of Us kind of are proud of ourselves, and we're not going to have anybody tell us what to do, but in this case, it really, the whole process made us think and look differently. So the Department of Education, the Iowa Department of Education, is using our episode as kind of the reason that this new evaluation system or accreditation system is good.
So one of the things we will also do this upcoming year is our focus on professional development. I kind of shared with you in the past with that. We'll do a district-level focus on how to look at the, how to understand the materials, how they're put together, how they're designed, and really kind of give teachers an opportunity to get their hands on that. We're going to be doing that at Summer Academy. And then Buildings are really focusing then on, how do we improve instruction with those materials? How do we incorporate some really good, high-leverage, research-based instructional practices into our model that we can really even get further with kids with doing some things? So that, that's really our next step with where we're going.
Questions from the board? I have a couple. I assume this is K-5?
K-6.
K-6. So one of the grade levels in the middle school will be doing it?
Yes.
And how will that affect the seventh and eighth grade curriculum then?
Well, this, Reading Wonders is a K-6. It spans K-6, and one of, I, I have, wasn't in all the conversations with the sixth-grade part, but my understanding is, one of the things that we look at is, every year, there's a big sixth-grade drop. And what we would like to be able to do is maybe provide some more consistency in a reading model, that when they go from fifth grade to sixth grade, there's things that are familiar to them, there's ways, there, there are things that are more structured and familiar than what they were used to in their K-5 years. And, because so much else is new in middle school, and they are learning so many new things. And then with the thought that between sixth grade and... Seventh grade. Okay. Between sixth grade and seventh grade, you know, they have other things about transition under their belt. And so that was one of, that, I know that was one of the thoughts behind that, was to provide that consistency up through sixth grade with that.
My second question, are you emphasis making this work?
Yes, absolutely, it will.
The coaches and the...
The coaches and our, and our, that, that will be their focus, is materials within our instructional practice.
Assume that...
Absolutely.
Like trimester or something like that?
Whatever. You, you tell me what really good things in place. We would have had good things in place this year, but it would be even better next year when that happens. And we really want to connect our science with our literature, with our language, because it's really about studying that type of thing, and they're going to work this year on how we can work those two together with the new science standards incorporated into these materials as well.
Sounds great to me. I think it's a good example of you, you're listening to the people that are in the trenches.
Thank you.
Isn't that one of our goals, making it the best place to work? We listen to our people? So I commend you for that.
Thank you.
It's great.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
I have one question on the, it talks about the reading, how there's a group portion, and then they break out into a tiered portion for the individual reading. How do they, how, just anything on how they provide that? Is it just different texts or different portions?
Sure. With this program, they provide it in two different ways. At the beginning of the lesson, when you're really studying the language and looking at that, a lot of that is whole group instruction, that where they're, they're digging in and they're looking at some really rich grade-level text that is designed to help teach the lessons that are going in there. It was, it was, they call it contrived text at this point, so you can really get in, and it's really designed so the teachers can go in and help make those points, and kids can see it. Then the next phase is they go into authentic text, and they gradually start to do more on their own with the authentic text. And then along with that, there are texts, there are four different levels of text that go along, right with the story, right with the skill, for kids who are approaching, kids who are on grade level, kids above grade level, and then our EL students. And they're all designed specifically for those kids, but they're still talking about the same topic. They can still, they can still have conversations about what they're reading about, even though that's at their grade level. That'll be kind of a new improvement for us, actually, because we haven't had that opportunity with kids before. And then there's a second level of, there's a second component of leveled texts that go in there, that are different text for each one, but still within the same topic or area. And so it's, so it starts to give them that, you know, so after they've kind of learned all their skills and they're talking about it, now they go to more that independent practice with different things that they're doing. And so it really aligns all that way throughout. The other thing that's really nice about how this is designed is the thing that they, the, the things that they study in language, the things that they do with spelling, with phonics, it's all aligned to the same skills that they're seeing in the book. And so they get lots of practice within the same thing. That was, that was difficult, if not impossible, for us to do in our, in our other, with our other materials.
Very good.
So phonics isn't going away, huh?
Phonics is not going away. Kids need it.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome.
Next, we have informational presentations. Dr. Bruckner.
Our first informational presentation is from our Special Education Director, Becky Zorn, who's going to tell you about some special education changes in services that we have planned for the future. And we've got several reasons for this plan, and she's going to talk about them, as long as we can get everything to work.
We're smiling because we did a little practice of this, because I said, "It never goes to full screen." What do we need to do for that? And now we have like... Now it won't connect periods, so. Like magic when he touches it. I'll hurry. Thank you for, for having us be part of, part of the board meeting tonight. I know that you have heard some about this through the agenda summary, but we thought that it might be a good idea to at least talk about the two primary changes that have come about, really since spring, actually. So with, I'll try to remember the, so with that, I do believe that you remember one of the things we talked about, or has been talked about, I know you've had it in board notes, was that we were going to discontinue a portion of our contract with the Vocational Development Center. That portion was called SEEK, or the Supported Employment and Academic Collaboration. And what that, what that did was to help some students with job-finding skills. So they practiced interviews, they learned how to write resumes, that, that kind of thing. It was a relatively expensive program, and if you can see that, our approximate cost for a year, because it really only touched up to 20 students. So we had a limit of really how many students could actually get access to that service. And so it was a, it was a good service that, that they provided, and they actually came on-site to us at the two high schools. But we had often asked the question, "Is that something we should be doing on our own? Is that something that special education teachers could incorporate with a part of, of what they're doing?" And so as we talked more through that, we thought, yes, I think that's something we could take on and maybe go deeper and reach more students, but we would probably have to have someone to be able to help us do that. So with that, we looked at one of our current employees, who's Joanne Eversold, who's a special education teacher from the high school, and who has a very deep passion for transition and helping kids do all things work. And she's available to us half that, well, this would be a good way for us to start, to see if we really could take what we've already learned and design our own program. She was happy to do that. I think she's, she's already got really good ideas. And I think you'll see from Janet in your board book, we're kind of simultaneously approving that job description as we tell you about the program, because it will be new to us, but it is something that we should be able to do. Certainly, a district our size should be able to provide that. So we're very closely with secondary Buildings. We'll probably focus a little more on high school to start because of just the, the partial position, but we do plan to dip down into the middle schools a little bit, because that's part of the new requirement through vocational rehabilitation. Talked about that Workforce Innovation Act that we are going to have to start doing. So you can see that Joanne will start that. We do have an active group of secondary people with an administrator who have been working as a vocational group, led by mostly Peggy Pavlik this year, one of our, our secondary leads, special ed person. So we're hoping that Joan can go ahead and facilitate that group. So we're hoping that Joan can go ahead and facilitate that group and get us going on what we need to do. So that's one change. I don't know if you want to have questions at the very end or if you have a question about any of that. Okay, good. All right. The next change that we wanted to talk about was really the one about providing an administrator to Heartland Therapeutic School. We have been having, I would say, many meetings. And this came after we had started the consortium. And I know that Dean has talked to you some about why we started the consortium. And it really was an effort to maintain two separate schools in our community, Heartland Therapeutic and Children's Square Academic Center, so that all kids could continue to go there. We say that it was a funding, a new funding change, but it was really a funding implementation, I would say, of what was existing rule that they hadn't really implemented. So at that point, neither one of those facilities could any longer charge their administrator or their administrative assistant two special education dollars. Well, you can guess what that might do to a smaller school or a private school. So that is then where we came in with the consortium. But then it even came farther than that because of the costs. They then asked us, they being Heartland, because we, we've had many conversations with Children's Square, but we are not at the same place at this point. So Heartland asked us to help them, what could we do? So we talked about reassigning a current administrator to be able to, to basically run the school, be a principal at the therapeutic school, and start from there. I guess the important thing, one important for you is in regard to budget, is that we can take this to the School Budget Review Committee to ask for spending authority, which if we receive that, then we can bill that out as part of our cost, which seems crazy that we can do it, but they can't, but that's the law. So that will help many schools, not just ours. And I think that is something important. In Council Bluffs, we do happen to have a couple of programs that a lot of districts use for students. And I think it's important that they're able to still have their students there too, even though we have the majority of the students. Probably the thing for you to know is this will be the first time since Heartland was created that there will be an academic administrator, if you will, at the school. So while I'm excited about that, it, it does create a need for us to continue to do even deeper collaboration than we have, because you might guess that there's, there's some fear that you might not pay enough attention to the, the mental health piece of it. And so we're, we're trying to go slow, but we had to make the decision, as you know, rather fast. So Chad has met with, with the Heartland people. We work, and I say "we," Dr. Bruckner, Dean and myself have worked a lot with Mary O'Neill, who took the place of Nancy Schuls at Heartland. In case some of you, I know, have known Nancy for a while. So we've worked a lot with her and we're moving forward. I am excited about it. The good news is Chad had been at the school for several staffings. And so several teachers knew him and they were, they were kind of excited because they had, you know, had a very favorable impression of him. So that's always nice. You kind of go that way. So that is our, our primary change right now. We will see how it goes. We'll keep you updated, you know, through, through board presentations. But we will continue to develop that collaboration. We need the school for some of our students. Unless we make the decision as a district to have our own separate school, we will still have students who need to be served here. So I do want to be sure you understand that, that we do have some high-needs students. The only other, so I guess, I don't know if you have questions about Heartland, but I did want to put this up as my last slide. Vocational rehabilitation has indicated to us that they have a grant that would pay half of a salary to do some of the same work that we've talked about Joanne doing that. So we are definitely going to explore that. And then I'll certainly take a recommendation to Dr. Bruckner at some point. So are there questions about any of the information?
How many students did we have in that program last year?
At Heartland? Did we have? We have around 40.
Forty?
Yeah, give or take. Depending on the month, yeah.
And the total number is?
Total number of students. We have asked them not to have more than 75, but they have tipped at 80 a few times. So we're roughly half, a little less.
I assume the teacher ratio is pretty low.
Yes, it is. It's about, there's a couple of classrooms that are 1 to 8 and the majority of them are 1 to 10. And then that, there are additional pair educators in the room.
Are they all weighted at Level 3?
I'm sorry, what?
Are they all weighted at Level 3 for special?
Yes, they are. And that's a really good question, because sometimes kids do get referred. But that would be one of the only ways we could even start to recoup.
To afford it, yeah.
Yeah. We watch that pretty close.
Will, will there be any services, I guess, that, like Chad's role would be with, is it responsible to all the consortium? Is it responsible to us? Is it, is it separate from us so that he's independent? And, and is, you know, an independent voice of reason, I guess? Separate from us, because we could control with that many kids and, you know?
That's a, that's a good question. He, he will remain our employee. He will, in a technical sense, report to me. And then, but he also will be hiring people for Heartland. So he will have to walk that line. He'll have to learn their hiring practices, that, that kind of thing. In a way, this helps us, because as the host district or even as a district who has a school in our community, we have always had the responsibility for oversight. So this is a way that we can do that with not like we're coming in with a compliance piece that we're more trying to help work with their strengths, you know, and then build it up. So it's a good question. I don't know, Martha, if you want to add to that.
I'm looking for a golden opportunity to tell the board that this is a way that our school district, as we do on a very regular basis, is giving back in collaboration. Not that I'm taking it personally or not, but somebody in our community last night said that we just take, take, take. And in this case, Council of Schools are actively supporting a program that's been a vital part of our community for years. That's Heartland Family Services. They started that school because years ago, we thought we needed a place to put children. You know, if you paid attention all along, that IOES gave that school to us. We used it for many years to, as a place for our children to be as we were renovating schools. Then we gave it the same contribution back by giving it to Heartland. And then they, with grants, spent over a million dollars renovating it. And as the consortium came to be, because the State Department has made some changes, they were hurting. And we have found a way to, we think, make the program stronger, tie it more closely to what we're doing, and also help them out of a pinch. So it's an example of Council of Schools giving back to the community.
Are we going to, or how are we going to communicate that? I guess to parents, all the affected families in the other districts and things like that?
We've already communicated with other districts. Dean and Becky met with the consortium and told them. And I'm not quite sure how we're going to communicate with parents. But for the most part, we think this is all win and no lose. And we think the parents will be very, very pleased with it. But I don't know if we've communicated it directly or not.
Not to the, not to the families yet, but that, that will be key. And we do have Mary, Chad and myself has a series of, of small meetings to get together to do just that, figure out what the communication will be. I think it's important for all parents, but especially for our parents. And some of them may know, they shouldn't feel a difference. If anything, they should feel more support. But sometimes that's, that's very difficult if you're, you know, if you're very vested in who's been at the program. And unfortunately, yes, someone did lose a job because of this, though.
So I just make sure people know where they can go for support, how it's going to work, that this is a, we're trying to make a positive out of this.
Yeah, oh, I think so. I agree.
And then maybe put other things where we collaborate out.
You know, I, I got an email from someone who has worked at Heartland Therapeutic School. And that person said that he or she thought this was really a bonus, because there will be a much closer tie between the principal. We expect Chad to come to all of our principal meetings. He will be mentored, he will be coached, he will still feel a kinship. That I'm not sure the principal always could have there, because in many ways, they were out on an island of their own. So he'll be supportive. I think it's, it's going to be just a win-win all around, so.
One other thing too, is the Department of Education is happy that we're going this route. They think that having a district employee at some of these third-party facilities does do exactly what we're trying to do. So they're, they said that they were happy about that.
And I mean, I would always also just tell you, Troy, that the parents of the students that we have placed at Heartland, they know how to get ahold of me. So it'll be, and others in the district, and others in the district. But it'll be, I agree, important to send that written communication. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Sounds like some good changes.
The next thing on our agenda happens to be the Standing Committee's annual status report. And by Board Policy 20, or 210, we are required to give you an update on membership and meetings and goals, et cetera. So that's in your packet. We don't have a formal verbal presentation, but we can answer any questions if you have any.
Anybody have questions about, what were there, four committees?
Six.
Six?
When did, when did they take place? I know that some of them have expired.
Some of the, and membership hasn't expired. We tried to change the membership on an ongoing basis and we wanted you to know which ones are current and which ones are going off. So you will get another report at the beginning of next school year. I think it's in September of the committees that will be working next year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you say you get 50% of the members at your meetings are better? Those of you who lead them, pretty good participation. Good. It's great. Okay, up next?
Up next, we have an enrollment report. Mr. McGreevy.
Trimester 3 is finally done. So we can give you your overview of how our students get enrolled in our schools. This year's been really good to us. We've increased 79 students this year compared to the end of last year, which is a very nice number. Over the last four years, we've increased, we decreased during trimester 3 compared to certified enrollment. We were down 24, 25, 65 last year, now we're up 6. So it's a good trend to see the district take on. It's been an increase of six students since certified count. So that'd be an extra how much, Dean? So we want to keep these students enrolled. Minority population has been steady for the last four or five years at around 21%. Mobility rate this year, we recalculated, recalculated it to be 14%, which is a decrease from last year at 18%. We're trying to get that number closer and closer to what it should be. It's very difficult when kids move around a lot. ELL remains another steady number, around 561 students. And special education, as Becky was just talking about, we have increased 47 students there since the end of last school year.
Is that a weighted number, the ELL, or an actual number?
That is an actual number.
Okay.
And that's what we have for you. All the rest of the, the better demographics and ethnicities are in your board report where you take a look at, if you guys have any questions.
The open enrollment in and out, how are we doing on that?
Open enrollment in, I didn't look at those numbers particularly. Open enrollment out, we are only up 17 students compared to last year.
And coming in is up too, right?
Coming in is up also. That number I know was up from before.
Okay.
Which is a good thing to see, that we're sort of pulling them in as, they're not going out as fast.
Questions from the board?
One question on the, on the grid, when it lists by schools. Lewis and Clark only had trimester 1 enrollment and there was no other information for that?
I can get that corrected for you. I missed that one.
It all says pound NA, so I'm thinking that's a computer thing.
I'll get that corrected and get it out to you guys.
Okay.
Is it the special education, is that we've classified students as special ed? Or we put them on IEP? Or we actually had 47 new students come in who were?
Both. Students that we currently had that were transitioned to IEP or were new to the district.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. McGreevy. Next up, we have an update on budget planning for 16 and 17.
This is an extremely collaborative report. Mr. Fringer, helping with our PowerPoint. Mr. Wilson and Mrs. Reiners, coming up with the data. What we're trying to say to you with a smile is that we are working on budget planning for next year. You all know that we are trying to do some reductions in order to help us with the bottom line. So these numbers were all in your board packet, but just so you can have an opportunity to discuss them. We are changing the bells. Is there anyone in the room that doesn't know that? We anticipate that the, the change in bells will save us $447,000 from what costs would have been if we didn't make the changes. We hope that the changes will go well. We're going to work our very best to be sure the buses on the first day are great. But we think this was a, a number that we could not pass up. The actual reduction over this year's cost is $240,000, including fuel. But we're telling you that it's $447,000 less than we would've spent if we did not change the bells. So that's a big number. We also went after trying to put out some early retirement incentives and notification incentives. Early retirement incentives are estimated at $425,000. Early notice incentives, this is, we gave people $1,000 at around Christmas time if they told us in advance that they were leaving. And based on rehires or not rehiring, the savings are $235,000. Regular teacher turnover, if somebody left, didn't tell us early, but we hired somebody to replace them, we're estimating that at this time to be $190,000. And other staff reductions are estimated to be $370,000. So if all of those numbers come to fruition by next year, we will, in those measures, have saved almost one and a half million dollars. That's not enough, but it's a good start. Without, in this case, without increasing class size and without giving anybody a pink slip. But the reason for doing this presentation is we want you to know we, we are taking it very seriously. May I answer any questions, or Dean, or Janet?
When do we think we will know if the anticipated savings from the changes to the bell times look like they're actual savings?
Well, based on the number of buses we use, it should be pretty early, because the reduction in number of buses is, I don't know how much, how many buses we're reducing.
About 17.
About 17 buses. In answer to your question, what they're going to do is whatever the contract is, and we have that as a fixed number, the bill is 1/10 of that starting in September. So we know that that's fixed in there. And then the only other question is, if we have more activity buses, we'll pay more than we... than we did last year. If we have less, we'll pay less than we did last year. So that one's kind of a floater.
And are we, I'm assuming, we will be over-communicating with parents about this?
Yes, we will. Yes. Diane came into my office just this week, and she's putting together bookmarks that have the start times. So yes, we will be over-communicating. That's a good word. We're gonna use that.
Yeah. Okay, excellent.
That's what I was saying, by the way.
Yeah, I know.
We're gonna continue next year. We have promised you and promised our constituents and our employees that we're gonna keep looking at this. Our goal will be to not to dismantle the good programs we've put in place. We have received in the last several years more grants than ever before, primarily grants to provide extra services before and after school. Now, at the high school level and the middle school and the elementary, we're gonna continue to look at those kind of programs to keep supporting our students. Mr. Wilson keeps wanting us to go out and find money that'll just pay for what we're already doing, and that's hard to come by. So we're gonna have to be creative. But we are taking it very seriously. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for your efforts. That's a good start. Million and a half? Next, we have a presentation on loaning the stadium fund cash from the general fund.
I don't have any PowerPoint. I didn't prepare a PowerPoint, because basically, in the Agenda summary sheet, it really explains what's gonna happen here. So just to give a little background, we have eight funds: general fund, management fund, PEPAL fund. Each fund stands on its own. It's like a separate corporation that has separate other corporations in it. They all, books have to stand on their own. And we also are under Dylan's law, Dylan's rule. Dylan's rule is, if I... To remind you again, is that if the code, Iowa code, does not address it, we can't do it. Which is different than Home Rule, which is, says if the Iowa code doesn't say you can't do it, you probably can do it. So they're very prescriptive on what we can and cannot do. And one of those areas is how to borrow money. We cannot go out, if we wanted to, to go down to the local bank and just get a line of credit. It's not addressed in the Iowa code, therefore, we can't do it. So when I looked at the stadium project, we have pledges and cash gifts of about $17 million. We've collected through May about 12 point, almost 12.4 million dollars. So we're about $4.6 million short. Now, those gifts are gonna be coming out over the next 12 to possibly 18 months. But we have bills to pay for the stadium project in advance of that. So the question is, is that how do we pay for all these bills? Well, one way is, we're about $4.6 million short. If I just divide that number by the number of board members and have you all come up with about $650,000, that's really easy for me. In fact, I encourage it. In fact, the cabinet voted for that the other day. But ultimately, you guys had to vote on that one. There is a way that we could have borrowed money using the pledges as collateral. However, we needed cooperation from the Community Education Foundation, and there's just a lot of back and forth that they were not quite that interested in going that route with us. So the only other option that we really have here is to borrow funds from existing, from an existing fund. So what I'm proposing is that the general fund, right now, has about $24 million in it. We'll have about $24 million in it at the end of June. Since we do not get stated in July and August, that's gonna get eaten down by about 18 million bucks. So we'll have about $5 million left at the end of August. Now, the way that these bills work for the stadium project, I'd like to get a loan for $4 million, but we don't need that whole $4 million right at once. It's gonna happen over the next five, six months. So what I'm proposing is that we have the general fund borrow, or lend, I should say, we have the general fund lend, the stadium fund $4 million over the next year. Now, the way that this rule works is that if you lend money between Fund A and Fund B during a fiscal year, or fiscal year starts in July, ends in June, you have to have that loan paid back by October 1 of the following year. Okay? So we have until October 2017 to pay back the general fund any money that has been borrowed. And the money, the pledges that are coming in will be used to make those payments. So the question you would have in your mind is, well, what if you don't have all the money to pay back that loan? I'm ahead of you on that one. So I talked to the attorneys, and I said, hey, what happens with this? And they said, well, you gotta have the money paid back. I said, what if I have another fund lend the stadium fund some money, and the stadium fund then pays back the general fund? So that loan's paid back. There's a long pause, and she said, yeah, you could do that, as long as your auditors bless off on it. So I called the auditors. I talked to Brian Green, who you've met. Brian said, yeah, that's not a problem with us. So what could happen next year, I may be back here at this time next year saying, hey, we have probably $1 million left. I wanna borrow $1 million from this fund, pay it to the stadium, let the stadium pay back to the general fund, so we meet the letter of the law. Okay? The way that this would work is, the stadium fund would be lent the money from the general fund as needed. We're not just gonna move $4 million into there. If they need some money to pay the bill, we'll put it in there. We also have to charge interest. And I asked the attorneys, what interest do we need to charge? She says, basically, whatever a market rate would be on something like this. And I said, like, 0.2%? And she said, yeah, that works. So the interest cost will be very, very inexpensive. Now, that'll obviously come out of pledges, any interest, and that's why I don't wanna lend everything all at once. We only lend it when we need it, so therefore, we can keep our interest costs down. Okay? So that is my recommendation on lending the stadium fund some money to pay some bills. Any questions?
I have a question for the 0.2%. Is that APR or monthly period?
It's APR. Annual rate.
Dean, wouldn't it be theoretical to say that if we complete the work now, we'll actually be paying less on it than next year due to inflation?
I'm sorry.
So actually, like, we'd be paying more next year if we waited on doing work, say?
Sure.
It would cost us more in the future, so you're actually probably saving dollars.
Right. Yeah, if we had to stop the project for that very reason, yes, we would have to, it would probably cost us more in the long run. And I don't think it would be in the district's best interest or the community's best interest to stop the project right now.
Seems like a very creative way to stay within the law, do what we need.
And I appreciate your due diligence on this, making, trying to think of all the scenarios. That sounds good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, let's go right on to the resolutions, then. Somebody can make a motion on this one. It's our first one, isn't it?
Yep. Yeah.
Please.
I can do that, so I'll make a motion to approve the interfund loan. Whereas, the Council of County School District is in need of funds to cover anticipated deficiencies in the capital projects fund. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of County School District, County Potawatomi, State of Iowa, Section 1, that the treasurer be authorized to transfer monies after June 30, 2016, from the general fund to the stadium fund, in an amount not to exceed $4 million to bear interest at the rate of 0.2%. And such interfund loan is to be repaid to the general fund with the interest upon receipt of the revenue from the Community Education Foundation or other stadium project donors. This interfund loan must be repaid by October 1, 2017, in accordance with law, I'm assuming. Section 2, that in the event that the district is unable to repay the interfund loan by October 1, 2017, the district shall proceed under the provisions of Iowa Code, Chapter 74, to issue an anticipatory warrant, or as applicable, seek approval of the voters pursuant to Iowa Code, Section 278 dot 1, Print 5, for transfers of surplus funds from the debt service, physical plant and equipment levy, capital projects for public education, and recreation levy funds to the general fund, or further transfers, seek approval for the state appeal board pursuant to Iowa Code, Section 24.223.
Thank you for making that motion, Troy. Is there a second?
Second.
Sounds like a lawyer wrote it, doesn't it? Any further discussion? Comments? This probably has nothing to do with the motion, but I'm impressed that we've had 12 and a half million bucks in there already. That's our five plus seven and a half million more, right?
Correct.
So we got about four and a half to go.
Correct.
I think that's pretty commendable. Okay, will you call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzayer?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes. And the motion is passed. Next resolution, perpetual lease of the Kern Middle School cell tower. Somebody wanna make that motion?
Approval of resolution to set a public hearing for perpetual lease of the Kern Middle School cell tower land. Authorize and direct the secretary to give notice of a public hearing for perpetual lease at Kern Middle School to be held at the ESC Office 300 West Broadway, Suite 1600, Council Bluffs, Iowa, at 6:30 PM on July 26, 2016.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? So the gist of this is, we're getting more money upfront.
Yes, right now, we're getting, and I forget the number in your board packet, I wanna say like 15,000 a year, is that about right? And what this would do, this would be a permanent perpetual lease, so essentially, what they would do is they'll make 20 years of rent payments in five years, and then it's done. And based upon the shortfall of cash from the state, we feel it's prudent to maybe accelerate some revenue that we could use as spending authority.
Makes sense to me. Any other questions, comments about the perpetual lease thing? If not, will you call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzayer?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes. And the motion carries. Next resolution is the, about the PEPAL levy. Is there a motion to be made there?
I move approval... Where did it go? I move approval of the presented resolution ordering election on the questions of the continuing to levy a voter approval physical plant and equipment property tax.
I can second that.
Is there a second? Are we missing some details here?
Well...
When we're doing it, or whatever?
It's September 13th. Special election on Tuesday, September 13th. And I have to have the ballot language in by the end of July, but I'll get that in tomorrow.
Do we need the recommendation read from it all, or no?
I think you just need to approve the ordering of the election. I think Susan has done that.
Any questions, comments? I talked to Dr. Bruckner and Mr. Wilson about, I guess I just feel I don't see the need to do it right now. Why don't we do it next year when we have the regular board election and save 15,000 to 20,000 bucks? I mean, we're in the mood of saving money. I don't know.
We have until 2018?
The current PEPAL voter, PEPAL expires June of 2018.
This has already been before the electorate once. It failed by four votes in order for us to be able to plan forward. You can imagine what would happen in this school district if we did not have PEPAL. So our reasoning for bringing it at this point is in order to be able to plan cautiously ahead financially.
And I think Scott, at the last meeting, you know, he asked the question, you know, what's this gonna cost us? And he said about 15 grand. And to me, the downside risk of losing $2.8 million, to me, weighs heavily that we should probably invest the 15 grand, even though I don't wanna spend those funds. The downside risk of losing that money is so high that I wanna try to get this thing passed, if we can.
I think Bill's point, though, has some merit. So we're saying that if we would push this off until the election of next year, we would still have how many chances to take it before the voters?
Three, maybe four.
Right.
As long as it passes before the June 18th.
You're correct.
And you, I think you said at another board meeting, there are four dates we can hold the election?
Correct.
You know, the board can do what they want. I just, I'm willing to take the gamble. I mean, the other question I'd have, suppose it is defeated this September, then what are we gonna do?
Hold it again.
In December?
We could.
At how much?
Or in February.
At 15,000.
Yes.
So is the, the assumption is that the earlier we do this, if it fails, the more chances we have? Is that, that's...
Correct.
The only reason why...
I'm being very cautious about this, but yes, you are correct.
And if we wait until next September, we'd still have three chances before the deadline?
Correct.
My only concern would be if it was put on the ballot at the time of an election, that it may not receive the amount of attention that we need it to, if they're focused on the election and not necessarily what we're trying to gain.
It's true. It's a possibility.
Another year lost.
Any other discussion?
Is this, would this be a special election, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Whereas, we could really educate this time and lose by four votes.
Well, I would assume the special election turnout would even be worse than the normal election turnout. So maybe we would have the opportunity to bolster more people.
Yeah.
And I know at our finance committee meeting and at the facilities meeting, the folks who were there, when I talked to them about this, they said, well, why don't you come out and speak to this group or that group? And I'm gonna take them up on that, because, like I said, I think this is really important for our district to make sure that we have this going.
Well, I would be happy to help go with you if you need board support.
Okay, that'd be great.
You know, I see two sides of this, so we're saying that it's important to not spend money, apparently, at a time where we're trying to save money. It's also important to understand where our funding's coming from at a time where we're trying to not spend money.
And I would add to that, we have pushed an awful lot of money out of the general fund into PEPAL. The last time we took this out for our election, we increased it. We promised no tax increase. We would balance, but it allowed us to take some things out of general fund. So we are at the point that, as a school district, we couldn't live without this. So I think it's a risk, but the board can make the decision. We are recommending approval of this resolution.
Is there any history on our chances in a special election versus putting it on the ballot for another election, or...
You know, it would, it would depend upon the other things happening. Which of you is up for election? Jill and, has to be...
Scott and Susan.
Scott and Susan. So you three are up for election. So if you three do something really interesting, and people wanna get rid of you and come out and vote against you, the number of people mad at this board could increase. There is some reason to do it separately. But there is a financial gain by doing it at the same time you have the other election.
Well, if memory serves, every time that this has gone to vote, it has passed. The only thing that didn't pass was the last one, because we had to break it into two, was the extension of the 10-year.
It was confusing.
But the language hasn't changed, is that correct?
Correct.
Right, however, last time, we had an increase to the dollar, to the tax rate, as well as an extension of the tax. And traditionally, the citizens of Council Bluffs recognize that the PEPAL fund is something that our district uses and uses well. And it's become something that, for our funding purposes, we need as far as balancing out our spending authority. And so they've done very well for us in passing and continuing to pass the PEPAL that we requested of them. And so I'm leaning a bit more towards showing our financial responsibility of telling the citizens, we recognize that we need this, but also that it would cost us money that we're already short on money if we were to hold the election now versus doing it at the regular election along with the new board members, or re-electing current board members.
Okay, any further discussion? Have we aired... Have we aired all the issues? Are we thoroughly confused? Okay, call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla.
Yes.
Mr. Kozier.
Yes.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Ms. Hanson.
No.
Mr. Grove.
Yes. Motion carries. So we'll have a special Pebble election this September thirteenth, you said? Okay. Approval of a new job description, vocational transition facilitator. I think Becky talked about that in her presentation, didn't she?
Yeah, I move to approve the job description for vocational transition facilitator as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve that job description. Any questions, discussion? Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla.
Yes.
Mr. Kozier.
Yes.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes, and the motion is approved. Next resolution is change orders for the stadium complex. Is there a motion?
I move to approve change orders number three, four, and five related to the Council Bluffs Community School District Athletic Complex Bid Package B as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ladies.
Before you vote, Mr. Olson is here, and he'd be glad to talk about it if anybody wants to hear about it. But if you just want to go vote, you'd probably just go home.
Why don't you come up and explain that, Jared?
You're all dressed up, you know.
We want to have, give you a reason to put your tie on here.
We were here, so.
They said it was only going to be eighty today, so I actually wore a tie for the first time in three weeks. They lied. Well, real briefly, as this is coming up, change order number three is a fairly small change order, and it is of the miscellaneous material type. You can see there's eleven items on there, small items up and down. As I talked to you back when we did the large value engineering change order, we were going to work with the contractor to continue to identify a way to save money. The contractor has held up their end of the bargain on that. If you look through here, there are several items that reflect as a credit on them. And these have been largely contractor-driven items that they have been continuing to go out of their way to find ways to save money while still moving forward with the project as designed. These ones are, like I said, fairly routine items there. If there's any specific questions, I can comment on them. Change order number four, this is, real quick up here on the screen, this is generally the site as it is currently designed. Change order number four is for this segment of paving that would extend, I rotated the view on you here. It will extend from the, between the soccer field and softball field up to Avenue L. As you recall, that house acquisition went way quicker than we anticipated. We managed to take it down. This will allow us to get up to Avenue L, tying into the parking lots that are already all paved in that area. That is item number one on change order, change order number four. Item number two is the site fiber cabling upgrades and additions. This is work that was not originally included in it. It was always envisioned it would be separate work once all the subs were already on board. So we had all the material and the change, shop drawings and stuff from the individual electrical suppliers, as well as integration in with the large video board that was installed, all of which we didn't have all technical data on when we went out for the initial bid package. This also includes site-wide security cameras that now integrate with the light poles that are supplied on site. That's item number two. Item number three is, this was an item that was removed during the value engineering process, and we'd like your consideration adding it back in. It's the donor wall video board. As you come into the ticket booth area, I'm sorry, I didn't have the, a good picture of that. As you come into the main ticket booth into the stadium, there's the big donor recognition wall. On the wall portion, portion facing the ticket booth, there'd be a video screen in there that is synced up with the large video board that the rest of the stadium can see. Since we moved forward with the large video board, we thought it'd be good to put this back in. The price adding it back in is identical to the credit the contractor gave us to remove it earlier. There was no markups over the last nine months, whatever that was. And we'd like, we'd like to add that back in for the overall project. Seeing as that, I did that last time I was here, we haven't had too many unexpected surprises. We are trending under budget right now on the project, I know. I'm going to say it anyways. And we wanted, we would like the consideration to add it back in there. Item number five is the, is the big one. I said it earlier, that property acquisition went much faster than we anticipated, as did fundraising and property demolition. This would be, items one and two would be all the initial work to complete the remainder of the onsite grading and paving improvements to complete the improvements between the parking lot included, the large parking lot here, and get us out to Seventeenth Street. The driveways align with the Cities Avenue J project that was discussed last night at City Council. Their decision to postpone moving forward on it doesn't impact the actual location of the project when it proceeds or what we would be doing at Seventeenth Street regardless of what happens with Avenue J. What this would allow us to do is to complete the rest of the paving, to allow use of that parking lot, as well as, for anyone who's been out there, they're just starting grading on the West Soccer Field. It is far more efficient to have them continue grading out the East Soccer Field while they're there and they're mobilized. What's included in this change order for the soccer field is simply the rough grading. As I said, the contractor's trying hard to get us the best possible prices. He's continuing to work on getting the final restoration, the seating, the siding prices to the best point he can. This time of year, all the suppliers are very busy, so he's not getting the response times he's liking. So I would anticipate there would be a smaller one coming in to basically put the perimeter fencing in and the final stabilization for the soccer field at a later date. But this would at least get the, all the preliminary work in place while the contractor's sitting right there burning diesel.
Thank you.
And then, real quick, this is the grand plan for the Avenue J collaboration between the city of Council Bluffs and the school district. The plan is currently discussed last night, was, the city was going to move, would like to pave the roadway. And the school district would then come in after the pavement is complete and do all of the everything that's not gray on that screen, which would be the vegetation, the signing, streetlights. There's a nice entrance right here, acknowledging, right in the corner here, acknowledging Gale Worker Sham Athletic Complex and such. That work is just for the future, but I wanted to show you.
Questions for Jared? Thank you, that was helpful to have that presentation. I must say, when I've been out there watching softball and baseball, this cement everywhere is huge.
I know, I flew over it. Here's a picture of it. See all the cement? Pretty cool.
But that's going to really, people are going to notice that.
Want that?
I'll send it to you. It's pretty cool.
And Jared, last night, you and Stacy mentioned, which did not come up in the conversation, all of the work, effort, planning, and money that's gone into water detention. You want to tell us about that?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the things that, when we've been working with the city from the very beginning, we knew we were going to have a large impact project that was going to eat up most of our real estate. I'm sure you've seen in the newspaper that the city is worried about stormwater runoff, especially in this location and area prone to storm drainage issues. So what we did is we worked with them for many months, early on, while we were still in the very early conceptual stages of this project, identifying ways that we could build stormwater treatment and management into the overall project design without simply just dedicating a space about the size of a soccer field to a detention pond. What we've actually worked out with, and it worked very well, is the rock base underneath both the football field and the softball field contribute towards our stormwater treatment due to the fact that they have a zero runoff design, it drops right in, and we have adequate stormwater around it. We've also managed to, if you've been to the softball games and you've seen the brick area in the parking lot by the east field, that actually is pervious brick pavers. Now, there is a little bit of ongoing maintenance with those kind of things. However, that allows us to filter the stormwater before it even hits the system, and it also slows down the release of the stormwater. And then there are still multiple smaller stormwater traditional detention basins around the area that collect the rest of the runoff before it hits the stormwater system. So the city doesn't have a huge influx in stormwater leaving our property due to our improvements.
It seems like collaboration that we're doing for the city.
Yes.
Great example.
Any other questions for Jared? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Are we ready to vote, then? Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla.
Yes.
Mr. Kozier.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes, and the motion is approved. Next up, we have a bid for janitorial supplies. Is there a motion?
I move to award the paper supplies portion of the janitorial supplies slash warehouse bid to Carpenter Paper and the plastic supplies portion of the janitorial supplies warehouse bid to National Everything Wholesale.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments about this bid? Think it was pretty straightforward, laid out there. Okay, call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. LaFerla.
Yes.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. Kozier.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes, and the motion is approved. Next up is Kern Kitchen Serving Lines bid. Motion for that?
I move to award the Kern Serving Lines bid to Hockenbergs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on that bid? Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla.
Yes.
Mr. Kozier.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes, and the motion is approved.
I want to give a shout out, thank you very much, Virginia Bechtel, for being here in order to answer any questions. Appreciate you having me here.
Okay, next is approval of contracts with Heartland Family Services and Children's Square for special ed services. Is there a motion?
I can move to approve the Heartland Family Services contract for special education services and direct the board president to sign said contract for 2016, 2017 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Any other questions, comments?
There is one little minor change. On the Heartland contract on page three, it says fifteen dollars a square foot for rent. They went back and relooked at it, they actually dropped it by a dollar. So it's fourteen dollars a square foot for that one, it's still fifteen for Children's Square.
So a little savings there, then.
Little save, about twenty-five thousand a year total.
Great, just paid for our election, huh?
And we still have money left over.
Okay. Will you call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla.
Yes.
Mr. Kozier.
Yes.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes, and the motion is approved.
And I can also move to approve the Children's Square contract for special education services and direct the board president to sign said contract for 2016, 2017 school year.
I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Any other questions, comments? Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla.
Yes.
Mr. Kozier.
Yes.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes, and the motion is approved. Next up is the superintendent's contract for next year. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the continuing contract for Superintendent Martha Bruckner as presented with an increase in the compensation package of two point four percent.
Second.
Any further questions, comments? Now, my understanding, this is just one year, not two years, like we did to other administrators.
No, it's.
The wage. That's the point I wanted to make clear, that, so it could be a different percentage next year. Yeah. Okay, any further comments, questions?
And this year, the percentage increase is our, is the same percentage as the state gave us.
Correct. Any other questions, comments? Okay, will you call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla.
Yes.
Mr. Kozier.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes, and the motion is approved. Next, we have superintendent's goals for sixteen and seventeen. I believe you had some in there, didn't you, Dr. Bruckner?
I did, I suggested eight different goals and kind of hoped that you didn't pick them all, but we all agree that we're going to work on them all, so. You can pick as many as you want, or you can just say all of them.
Needs to make a motion on the number and.
Well, this year, didn't we have four, four?
Correct. Five, but yeah.
I guess I just have a problem, government, it's eight. I realize that means we got to pick and choose.
Do we make a motion first and then discuss?
Okay.
Wouldn't the motion need to include which ones would be a part of the?
Are you willing to do that, Mr. Hanson?
I'll do it.
Okay, Dr. Jill.
I move to approve superintendent's goals number one through five as mentioned in our board packet for 2016, 17, as discussed. Do you want me to read them specifically?
That might be good.
I'd like to, but my laptop died.
There's this one.
Second week row. Number one, ensure timely completion of strategic action plans designated for implementation in the 2016, 2017 school year. Number two, ensure that student achievement and graduation rates for the school district continue to increase. Number three, develop a financial plan for the district that supports district strategic plan initiatives to the greatest degree possible in a year of insufficient state funding. Number four, work with the district leaders and potential funders to develop strategies to continue to position Council Bluffs Community School District as an educational model in the state and region. And number five, lead district efforts in early childhood literacy, school attendance, and summer learning in order to position the community to succeed in the campaign for grade level reading.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Dr. Jill is going from eight to five, is her priority. It doesn't mean we won't do the others, but. Is that, is that what we're understanding?
Just means that she has to report to us on those five.
Those five, yeah. It's kind of like we did this year with evaluation, we had four goals, and that's what we evaluated her on. That would mean this year, we'd have those five. I think they, in my opinion, are priority for us, so.
Is there a second on this?
Did we have a second? Yeah, we did, didn't we?
Second.
Oh, second, now we got a second, now we can discuss, and I got ahead of myself, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I guess I would have one if, or maybe two. I feel that while those are all worthy, and I think all eight are worthy, I've, I've found something about Martha that is probably one of her best strengths as a superintendent is when she's got a couple of goals to go after, she does it tenaciously. And there's someone here that I would feel remiss to not have to bring up, given comments there from parents and things I've seen. One of those being the number seven about bowling and something to do with number eight about college and career readiness. And I guess I would, what I would like to see, and if I was to personally ever challenge Martha, I would say, Martha, I'd like you to really work on these things. I would really like it to be where we would say, a safe and harassment-free learning environment. That needs to be our top priority. And, and that would be on school property. Because our parents need to know their kids are safe there. And they, how can you have a good and learning environment if your kid's getting harassed, if there's bowling going on? And there seems to be a lot of communication about that, and if there's lots of smoke, there's a fire in place. Number two, I would say that we have done a great job with number two in graduation rates and the increase in that. And I don't want us to take our eyes off that. But I feel that if I said to Martha, I'd really like if our kids were college and career-ready. And if that was your number one priority, she would beat the heck out of that thing.
They're for you.
And I guess, so, so I know you did. I know you did. And, and I don't know if it's so much about the indicators and metrics or whatever, but is, and I know we have people working on this, but if we say, you know, our focus is that if a kid's going to graduate from here, they're going to at least be ready for a job. And for the majority of them, they're going to be ready for education after high school. And for a lot of them, they're going to go and they're going to be really prepared for college. And I get. And I get that not everybody goes to college and does well. A kid, you don't know where kids are, but I sure want to give them that chance. And I think if there's anything that we're going to do to change the impression of this district, we've done a lot, we've spent a lot, we've built a lot. Graduation rates have come up, we have a phenomenal staff, we're doing all we can in leading so many ways, and while I think it's neat to be, you know, that we... We're going after the grade level reading and the All-American City and all those things, I think those are great, but there's some... Having kids be prepared for life after high school is what we're supposed to do. And, you know, we're great collaborators here at the district, and that involves having kids who are ready to give back to this community. So, I would love to see seven and eight put in there, and you could shorten those up somehow, but safe learning environments and college or career-ready kids. Would love to have me in there.
Thank you, Troy. Go ahead, Scott.
I would also like those same two to be added, and recognizing that college and career-ready is one of the end games of our education, along with graduation being the other big ceremony of the end game. So I'm thinking if it wouldn't be too great an issue of saying we don't care about graduation if we remove the graduation goal and instead have college and career-ready be the goal in place of the graduation rate. So we could remove number two, ensure that we even improve our graduation rates, and replace it with college and career-ready. And so I would like to move to amend the motion to replace number two with number...
Eight.
Eight, for ensure success of district efforts to establish indicators and metrics of college career readiness and to develop a multi-year plan for district improvement.
So, we have a motion to amend the original motion to substitute two with eight.
Right.
Is that correct? Is there a second for that amended motion?
Before we do that, could we have more discussion as to which ones we were going to amend? Because I would second that, because I don't believe that Dr. Brechner would ever give up on graduation rates, regardless whether it's written down or not.
And you can't be college and career-ready if you haven't graduated.
Right. I don't want to say that it's not a priority, but it's kind of... It's there, it's always going to be there, we know it's always going to be there. It's under mission. But I'm with Troy, I've had a lot of people asking about the college and career, other than the college, more of the career and trades and...
We have a motion to amend. We need to address that before we can go any farther.
So is there a second to Scott's motion?
We either have to say yea or nay to the amendment before we can...
Well, okay, we need a second of it.
Yes, second.
That's right.
Is there a second for Scott's motion?
Well, that would... Yes, that would be a... I would second Scott's emotion.
Okay.
Motion.
Now we can discuss that motion.
Okay.
Amended. Your amendment.
The amendment.
Replacing two with eight. I certainly don't have any trouble with doing that, but I'm beginning to think that this could take a couple more hours to get this done here. Do we have to do this tonight? I mean, I think there's some great discussion going on here, and maybe we could have somebody pull this together for the next meeting, or...
If you want to... What I heard, informally, what I heard Troy say, and then heard it echoed over here, Troy said, "Put in seven and eight and take out two and five." I mean, there's no magic about five either.
We've got one amendment right now.
Well, see, that's what I wanted to know before we go forward, is how that works.
And there's also no limit. What you can do is tell me what the topics are you want to do, I mean, I understand what you're saying. For eight, you're saying you want something to ensure that we're working towards college and career readiness. And if that felt too long, you can just tell me that the goal has to do with that, and I can bring back or put in ABC News some suggested wording. I don't know that it's going to take two hours, I think...
Could option... Could two just say something like, at the end of two, it says, "With the ultimate goal that our graduates are college and career-ready?"
You're cheating. Yes, you could.
Well, we're starting to wordsmith now.
I know. But I mean, sort of...
I mean, guess what I'm trying to speak to? I think the discussion is great. I don't know how we go forward.
Or you would like... You're saying, Bill, you'd like to have maybe a discussion about superintendent goals at the board table, where we hash through a bunch of these at another time.
Either that, or direct the superintendent to... Based on what she's heard tonight, and we approve them in July. I mean, we could go on with amendment and amendment, I guess what I'm saying, I don't know. That's... The board has to decide what to do here. You want to speak to your amendment more than Scott?
Well, with my amendment, I was simply recognizing that number two and number eight are very closely tied together, and as Dr. Ogres observed, you would not be college or career-ready without high school graduation. And so therefore, in order to have the college and career-ready, we would need the graduation rate, and so replacing those two, we're really not eliminating number two. We're really making it a little bit more complicated by saying, not only is there the graduation, but the graduation will mean something for your college and your career.
I think that's what you were saying. Okay, we have an amended amendment to the original motion. We have to vote on the amendment first. Any further discussion on that? And the amendment is, is to replace two with eight.
Right.
Okay. Let's call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
No.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Now we're back to the amended motion now. So we have one, eight, three, four, and five. That'd be correct.
A second motion be made?
Sure. Another amendment?
Amendment, I guess, would be to replace five with something that says simply, "Lead the district effort to create a safe, harassment-free learning environment for all students."
Okay, you have another amendment to the motion to replace, what was it, five with seven, something? Five with...
Five with something separate.
About safe...
It would... Seven would be... Become obvious in that case.
Yeah.
Anti-bowling, but I think it's about more about the safeness of anti-bowling, to me is a... Is more programs, things around bullying, and in reality, I'm saying...
I understand.
Let's have it be... Our kids are safe when they walk on our school grounds. Our kids are safe when they, you know, I mean, just address safety and harassment.
Sexual harassment would be one of those.
You bet.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, everybody understand his amendment?
And refreshing our memory, number five is the literacy. I will second that amendment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hanson. Any further discussion on Mr. Arthur's amendment? It's understood? Dr. Brechner feels comfortable with those?
But can you just clarify what those are at this point?
Pardon?
Can you clarify what those objectives are at this point?
The ones...
That we're voting on?
Well, the amendment motion is to take away five and substitute it with language talking about a safe and orderly environment for everybody.
Does that language have to be defined before we vote on it?
What I heard, I think, was Troy suggesting combining seven with some other language, "Lead district efforts to ensure a safe and harassment-free learning environment for all students." Is that what...
Well, not just students, wasn't it? Was everybody?
So it could be teachers too, but...
You're...
I would just say, I said, "Learning environment." So that to me would mean, nobody's harassing our teachers or our janitors or anybody.
Does that help, Dr. Ogres?
Yes, thank you.
So that's amendment from Mr. Arthur. Any further questions, clarifications needed on that?
So you're moving to replace number five with seven?
Yeah.
Enhanced language of number seven.
Right.
I think since we're going through this process, it would be good that we... Whatever we end up with, Dr. Brechner puts it in language that we can all agree to at the next meeting, maybe.
I feel bad for her, because number one, where it talks about timely completion of the strategic action plans, pretty much addresses all eight here. But I like the idea sometimes where...
So is it redundant to have that in the...
Just clear things, I think, help. We didn't have anything, I don't think, really clear about harassment-free, or anything in the strategic plans, we had other things.
Okay, any other questions on the amendment? We're replacing five with enhanced language of number seven about safe environment. Is that your intent?
That's my intent.
It's been moved and seconded, that amendment. Any other questions, comments? Not, take the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
No.
Dr. Ogres?
No.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
And I think the motion is approved. Now we're back to the original motion with two amendments. Right?
Yes.
So we've got one, eight, three, four, and modified seven. Correct? Got that straight in my head. So any further discussion now on the amended motion twice? We're doing good parliamentary, are we doing here all right? Mr. Kazire? It's good, it's a board at work, that's fine. Any other comments, questions? Okay, take the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes. And the motion carries.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're down to approval of the Council Bluffs Consortium agreement. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I can move the Council Bluffs Community School District to continue its involvement in the Council Bluffs Consortium via a 28E agreement, and direct the board president to sign the consortium agreement for the 2016-2017 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. LaFurla. Any other comments, questions? Okay, please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes. And the motion is approved.
Next is another consortium agreement with the Apex Program of Glenwood, Iowa. Is there a motion?
I move that the Council Bluffs Community School District continue its involvement in the Apex Consortium via a 28E agreement, and direct the board president to sign the consortium agreement for the 2016-17 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion, comments? Please take the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Riley? She's... Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
And the motion is approved. Next, we have some policies to approve. Who wants to read the first motion?
I move to approve the first reading of Policies 403, 526, 603, and 702 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. For the audience, and I might just say, that deals with employee conflict of interest, student drivers permit for school, curriculum development implementation and assessment, budget consideration by Board of Directors. Any other questions, comments on that?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Me.
Okay, thank you.
Got anything for it?
No.
Okay, will you call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
And the motion is approved. Next is another policy, motion?
Yeah, I can move to approve the second reading of Policy 615 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Riley, I guess. Any further discussion, comments? Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson? Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes. And the motion is approved. Third one is administrative regulation. Is there a motion?
I move to approve administrative regulation 906.1 as presented.
Thank you. Any...
I'll second that.
Second that one? Thank you, Mr. Arthur. Any further discussion, comments?
I have a question. The number six, that was crossed out, the activity may not be a commercial profit-making venture, but in the fees, we have a tier A for-profit?
Sharp eye there.
Didn't notice it before, so not that sharp.
Ms. Ostrowski, you're going to deal with that?
So we eliminated the exclusion that it... We're saying you can rent the facility if you are for-profit, and then we account for that in the fee structure.
Okay. So before, we didn't have a for-profit.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so we've accounted for that, because we do have instances where Dan...
But it was happening.
Yes.
Okay.
Examples of that. And so we, of course, have a fee structure that represents the fact that they have the ability to pay for our services.
I understand that.
So you made it clear, is what you did.
I believe so. Good work by a committee of folks who work directly with those who are using our facilities, who've come up with this, using comparability from other Iowa districts and other metro-area districts.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments about that? Will you call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes. And the motion is approved. The last motion on policies?
I move to approve administrative regulations 102.2, 102.3, 102.4, 102.5, 102.6, and 102.7 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Arthur. Any discussion, comments?
I have one question. 102.5, which has annual notice of nondiscrimination. It says, "The Council Bluffs Community School District offers career and technical programs